First of all, this is a scheduled reorganization meeting of the Borough of Runnymede. The agenda items are strictly reorganization. There was apparently an application that was going to be heard this evening of the LLC. I spoke to the attorney for that applicant. They requested a postponement of their hearing. So they indicated also that they are going to waive any time restrictions that the statute requires on applications to move forward. So they're probably not taking, so to speak, on their application. So that should be put on the record. But I guess if anyone is here that is interested in that application, the board will have to set the meeting night whether it's going to be February's meeting or March's meeting. The applicant indicated that they were not concerned whether it was February or March. So whatever your agenda allows, the board will make an announcement after they reorganize as to the next meeting that that application will be heard. The statute also allows the board not to require the applicant to re-advertise and re-dose. Since this was a date that was set, the announcement will be made tonight. Anyone interested in that application that's here will hear the next date that is set. That will be your notice to review.
Mr. Chairman, please. Tom speaking for myself only, but I think because of the vast scope of that application, I think that in lieu of our solicitor situation, we would maybe want to put that onto the March 14 meeting so our newly appointed solicitor can come up and speed on that rather than trying to rush it into February.
Yeah, we've had some parts planned.
Yes, with parts planned.
Previous, as you would like to. It's a very complicated application.
Let the opposite second chair bring up the steel on it. In between now and March 14 would give us ample time rather than trying to rush it into February.
There's motion to be heard of March 14, please.
I agree.
All those favors say aye. The meeting that we'll hear today, an application from this Parker Road and Blackman, East Chamber, they're connected, they're at the crossroads on it, will be heard again on March 14. If anybody or the public that's here to hear that meeting this evening, it's going to be postponed. But we're not going to start the clock. We all say it's that we only have a certain number of days to hear the application, or the applicant wins by default. The application moves forward by default. So we have to ask them for the department which they gave us and we're grateful for that.
That's correct. So this will answer.
Here for that application will not be heard this evening.
How many of you would need to go?
I have a question. Something like from please give your name, walk in there, like, definitely take that one.
I'm in the front of the form of Sheffield Court. Why was I not notified? And why did we have to shoot from?
There's a problem with the actual, any court this evening, we do not have the solicitor.
Okay. He announced that there was a public notice.
But he hasn't been appointed. He's filling in as a, because our solicitor came here, so when that happens, they go, we originally were going to have the tax solicitor sitting on the reading, but there's a conflict there also.
Okay, very good.
So that's why Mr. Parker, we are here this evening.
I'd like to be on notice for this application.
We want to hear it in March.
Okay, thanks, sir.
That's effective notice for the March 15 as the chair.
Okay, might not get it.
No, there will not be unnoticed by the state.
So if everybody's been noticed, that's why you're here.
Everybody's here.
That's why they know.
What are you on the?
One card.
One card.
That's not true.
Within 200 feet.
I'm at 200 feet.
I'm right across the street from him.
We have a question about that. You have to contact the Borough Clerk who chooses to give the list.
That's false. That is false.
Yeah, you just go to Borough Clerk's office.
Is that Jewish? Is that Jewish?
That's not true. Yeah, just please specify if I may, Mr. Chair. The statute requires an applicant to secure from the tax office a list of everyone within 200 feet. That's right. The applicant is then obligated to follow that list from the tax rolls to notify everyone of that application, everyone that's within the 200 feet. So you should be on that list. If you're not on that list, then the applicant would not have sent out a notice to you because his only obligation is to secure the list from the borough and follow that list and notice that everyone within 200 feet.
But they also have to give us the green cards back, right?
That's right. Yeah, what they'll do is they either come in with their green cards, proof of service, or the stamped white card that shows that they posted service in case someone doesn't want to accept the service by mail.
When the whole town is affected by something like this, why isn't the whole town affected?
Well, there's also publication in the newspaper.
Can we do that way?
Well, that, I would assume that has been done. Besides showing proof of mailing to everyone from 200 feet, the applicant is required to put a notice in the newspaper at least 10 days prior to the scheduled date of the hearing. So and they have to show jurisdiction-wise that they submitted that to the board.
But that's a different thing.
Yeah, so statute also says when an application is postponed at a meeting, anyone who's interested in it will be at that meeting there, do not have to re-advertise, nor do they have to reserve those.
So you had 200 feet that year. Is that from where the road is going to be put in, the access from Hartford into this development?
It's 200 feet beyond the lot lines of the crockery that's being developed. So the boundary of the track, 200 feet beyond that.
All right. Then there's some people that should have been notified.
That's right. I'm 20 feet.
How would I see Joyce Parker to see why on this list?
I'm less than 100 feet away from that line.
I'm 200 feet.
How much are you?
I'm Sheffield Court on Hartford.
Sheffield and Hartford, right on that corner.
And I'm right on the other end of that corner.
Right across from the Hartford.
Anybody who feels they should have been notified and wasn't, come up here, give me your name and address, and I'll see you at the Borough Clerk if you're going to be there.
Hi, how are you? Don't wait to game.
Excuse me, excuse me, try to get this on record. Anyone who feels they did not get noticed, they're giving their name and their phone number to our planning board secretary, and if want to talk to this microphone where it's being recorded, so we have a public record of it as well as June having a record. So if you give your name and number to June, please come to the microphone and state your name, address, and we're going to put it on the record, okay? Thank you.
But the law requires, as we work on, produce certified lists, everyone within 200 feet of the boundary of this application, to be to bound to this application, anyone within 200 feet.
My name is Henry Arada. I live at 400 Sheffield Court in Runnymede, New Jersey. My phone number is 929-3796.
Bruce Waldemeyer, 403 Sheffield Court.
My name is Michael Seacombe, 821 East East Chamber.
How many of you have the parking space? Can I ask somebody down the parking space since I can't go in there? There's a disabled parking space out there. Why are all police officers in front of the disabled parking space? And I have to go all the way down the end to go find a parking space. Yeah, today, tonight, we're supposed to bring it, but it hasn't. And I took it one more time, the cops are trying to be cool. And other police officers are there. That's a disabled parking space where somebody can't walk. And we shouldn't be, cops, police officers in front of the parking space are locked in so that I can't enter. That's what it's for, for people that are disabled. So why do you find them?
I think there was some police activity before the charge of three, and that's why the parking. I deny, I cannot deny or confirm that, but that's what happened. Because I've been coming here for many years and I've never had a parking.
I've never seen them ever. And I've been here for years.
Go ahead, Bob.
There's some activity. I'm not sure what it is, but I want to see what they're doing.
Bruce is in the background.
Yeah, I've got a question. I see some people aren't notified.
Of everything we do, this tends to be the matter. Bruce Starmer, I'm not bothered, 818 East Chamber.
I guess my question is, do people that weren't notified, is somebody going to go over to the tax math to make sure everybody's notified now?
They're on the list.
Oh, if they didn't get, okay, so from the attorney.
Did they pick it up from the postal office?
I just want to make sure everybody's on the list and they do get notified.
They're on the list, but they sent it out. I just checked. All the needs were on your own grid. So either they didn't get it off the postal office or...
Well, mine, I did get it, I did get it received, but I did have to go to the postal.
You're on the same post cabinet. You're on the same post cabinet.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else has a grievance with this application, please stand forward, give your name and address.
I understand seeing no one else wishes to speak on this application. I would close the call fortunately. We want a real reorganization fortunately.
Okay. In the motion, second was bid by a, if white, all those favor say aye. All right, this matters now, both of them are on the record. Again, the item and the next order of businesses, swearing in with the four people that were, three people that were reappointed to the planning board, one new member, two old members. New member is Mr. Ober. Mr. Ober was appointed at January reorganization meeting for one year, repeated alternate. The only votes in the case of the fact that we only have five people, six people to vote. Mr. Ober didn't vote at that point. Kathy Duchan is a longtime member of the board, and she was reappointed to a four-year appointee. This is one, is a public employee, which fits more of the parameters, her membership one of the eight in the board, and is appointed for one year term. Next, Mr. Parker, please dis swear the commitment at this time.
You can step forward. Raise your right hand. Repeat after me, search your name. Aye. Disown, we swear. We support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution and laws of the State of New Jersey and their pure true faith and allegiance to the same and faithfully and impartially and justly perform all the duties as a member of the planning board Borough of Runnymede to the best of my ability. So, happy guys.
Next, two members of our group who are going to this.
Do you see the plane?
Please clarify from the three, still have a file, the room here. I'll dial it again, maybe they don't. We'll see them more.
So you're right on the east end.
This is a whole extreme. This is not a street. That's a big street.
Our properties aren't being affected, you're still right. Although somebody's saying it might affect some.
It's true.
See how this is going to everybody?
It's just a small property.
Right. We want to address the address.
You see the plane?
Please clarify from the three, still have a file, the room here. I'll dial it again, maybe they don't. We'll see them more.
So you're right on the east end.
This is a whole extreme. This is not a street. That's a big street.
No, no, our properties aren't being affected, you're still right. Although somebody's saying it might affect some.
It's true. It didn't make it.
See how this is going to everybody?
It's just a small property.
Alright, we want to address the address.
Nomination for act of vote. You have nominations for chair.
Annominate specifically.
So there are no nominations. We'll close the nominations and call for a vote on the position of chair.
Absent.
Alavis?
Yes.
Lake Hammer?
Yes.
Bushian?
Yes.
Chowski?
Yes.
Fullerton?
Yes.
Walperly?
Yes.
Dunn?
Yes.
Thank you.
Congratulations, Chair.
Thank you very much. Appreciate all these compliments. The next one, I'm sorry. The next one is a nomination for vice chairman. I'd like to place a name, the nomination, the name of Andy Fleehammer, who has served in this position. I'd like to hear from my candidate. Are there any other nominations? I agree the nominations be closed, but what's the, have a roll call, please.
Dickinson?
Yes.
Alavis?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Lake Hammer?
Yes.
Bushian?
Yes.
Chowski?
Yes.
Fullerton?
Yes.
Walperly?
Yes.
Dunn?
Yes. The next meeting is appointment of secretary of 30 years, 2012. Right, aye.
Annominate, Jim Nelson. There are no nominations. We'll close the nominations and call for a vote on the position of chair.
Absent.
Alavis?
Yes.
Lake Hammer?
Yes.
Bushian?
Yes.
Chowski?
Yes.
Fullerton?
Yes.
Walperly?
Yes.
Dunn?
Yes. Thank you.
Congratulations, Chair.
Thank you very much. Appreciate all these compliments. The next one, I'm sorry.
You can see this long.
The next one is a nomination for vice chairman. I'd like to place a name, the nomination, the name of Andy Fleehammer, who has served in this position. I'd like to hear from my candidate. Are there any other nominations? I agree the nominations be closed, but what's the, have a roll call, please.
Dickinson?
Yes.
Alavis?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Lake Hammer?
Yes.
Bushian?
Yes.
Chowski?
Yes.
Fullerton?
Yes.
Walperly?
Yes.
Dunn?
Yes. The next meeting is appointment of secretary of 30 years, 2012. Right, aye.
Annominate, Jim Nelson.
There is a second?
Second.
We have a second? All those favors said, I would say aye.
Aye.
And have, have the best, the best of all call, vote please.
Dickinson?
Yes.
Alavis?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Lake Hammer?
Yes.
Bushian?
Yes.
Chowski?
Yes.
Fullerton?
Yes.
Walperly?
Yes.
Dunn?
Yes. Congratulations, Chair. Thank you. Welcome back. Appointment of board solicitor, Mr. Parker, we are sitting here this evening. I would have been recommended to the board that we defer the table of the appointment for board solicitor until we've had a chance to rebid, and I'll make that in the form of a motion.
I'll make the motion that we table the appointment of the board solicitor.
Okay, the motion made, seconded, all those favors say aye. The motion made, seconded, and the application for the appointment of the board solicitor will be tabled until after the rebid. Now we have on the agenda appointment of our, of the planning board engineer.
Annominate, Mr. Pettit.
I'll follow you.
As it's made, seconded, made by Andy Fleehammer, seconded by the mayor. All those favors say aye. Motion has it, and we're cleared to welcome back Chris Pettit as our professional associate and engineering department.
Thank you very much.
Approved amendments in order for the December 11, 2011 meeting.
Make motion to approve the minutes in the December meeting.
There is a second?
Second.
Which you made, seconded, approved amendments for December 11, 2011. All those favors say aye.
Aye. Chair, schedule meetings, schedule meetings, schedule meetings.
I didn't see that.
After the end of the year.
The secretary and myself have been in cooperation with a calendar for across the year 12, meeting nights, which will include this December meeting, which is our normal reorganization meeting. So we're going to submit the application to Joyce and have it advertised in the retrospect and speaker.
December, you mean?
January, I'm sorry, January.
January, you mean.
Okay, thank you. Make it in the motion in the form of a motion.
Make the motion to accept the calendar.
Accept. I'll second the motion. All those favors say aye. And I will adopt the resolution for the scheduled amendments. Is there any other business the company court, or?
Resolutions memorializing cedar properties. Remember we voted on last time that we memorialized this property? So we have two of them. We have that one and we have the other one.
We have the, we have a resolution, did you read the resolution? It's true. Were they able to read that? Do you want to, you want to read the?
I don't think David has it. We have, we have the memorializing resolution for cedar properties, block 105, block 10 11, 1101, 1102, 1103, 12 to 13. That is the property where the plant, the plant was, and it only includes the commercial end of the business.
Phase one, this is like, did you read it?
Well, actually, it's phase one.
That's phase one. And we're memorializing the phase one application that is on the plant property, okay? Not, we don't have the plans for the back end of it yet, just memorializing phase one, which is the retail store.
Correct.
You want to go to separately, David?
Yes. Motion made, seconded, all those, have a roll call, vote please.
Dickinson?
Yes.
Alavis?
Yes.
White?
Yes. Mr. White, were you at that meeting?
Yes, I was. Mr. White did it then.
Alavis?
Yes.
Bushian?
Yes.
Chowski?
Yes.
Fullerton?
Yes.
Walperly?
Yes.
Dunn?
Yes. We have the communications, Jim.
Mr. Dickinson, we threw out this communication from Mr. Del Sordo. What are you going to do there?
Yes.
It says, Dear Mr. Dickinson, all members of the joint zoning planning board, I respectfully ask that you remove my name for consideration as a joint zoning planning board solicitor for the calendar year 2012 due to the fact that I have been appointed as prosecutor for the Borough of Runnymede. Candidly, I have enjoyed the privilege of assisting the board fully and completely offer to the new solicitor the assistance of my offices in the form of transfer to the board. Firstly, my wish is very healthy and prosperous to be here. Mr. Del Sordo, I'm authorized to assist the new solicitor.
Loop the communication if you see this one. All those favors say aye. And we'll venture the communication to the straight amendments of the board. Next, we have good and well fair. This portion of the meeting is open to the public. Any of you wish to speak? Please stand forward, forward, forward within the microphone, give your name and address, please.
Good evening, John Schmidt on West Thompson Avenue, Gloucester City, New Jersey. Just out of curiosity, for the bids for your planning zoning board, attorney, how many propose to give for the RFP?
For the solicitor? Three.
We're nine member board, you're not?
Two.
If they got, if they got three, which is normally the requirement is for the general rule of thumb, I guess, why wouldn't you just pick one of the other two?
What was the second part of that?
Why wouldn't the board go with one of the other two then?
We haven't picked anybody yet.
I know, but you made a motion to authorize to go out to rebid to the RFP over again. You have two other bid or two other proposals that you received. Did you look at them?
Yes, one was in North Jersey, which was quite a distance further, and one was more than what the other two were. As far as price was.
What was the price difference?
What was it?
What, yes.
Oh, just a second. We had, Eric Bernstein was 125 an hour. They were in North Jersey. Longham Hour was 150 an hour. And Mr. Del Sordo asked to be...
What was Mr. Del Sordo's price, out of curiosity?
100 per hour.
Few other questions I have as I was taking notes. I noticed that there's, how many council members sit on the planning and zoning board?
Only one, sir. It's all permitted and all.
And there's only one member of council that's there?
Mayor and the, and the council member have to sit by law.
I understand that, okay. For some reason, I thought there was two council members on this board.
No, I'm not a council.
No, you're not. Another question, are your meetings, are they always at 7:00 on this day of the month?
From.
Not on this day of the month, sir, from the second Wednesday.
Second Wednesday.
It's published. It's not the same date.
Right. Same day of the month.
You have eight conflicts in the month, you have eight conflicts in the month of June and then the month of November.
But it is at 7:00?
And then on that day of the month, the month starts.
Can I ask why it's at 7:00 and not 5:30 like the council lets?
I guess we just don't like tradition because we've always had it 7:00. Well, as a matter of fact, there is a perfect reason. We had a solicitor at one time when David Vanello was the mayor, and had to drive it from Burke Packard.
I'm not denying the word for that. I actually want to call the board, grabbing at 7:00, which is a reasonable time to allow people to come to the meetings. And Mayor, you sit on the planning board, the planning zoning board, maybe you should take it back to council along with the council president.
I'm not talking about this, this meeting.
Well, Mayor, I can bring it up, whether you want to talk about it or not, you don't have to. I'm going to bring it up, and I would suggest maybe the planning board, maybe the mayor of council, look at what the planning board's doing, and it's maybe convenient for the, for residents and other citizens of interested parties to make it to the meeting. You know, there are times where I believe some planning and zoning issues may go in front of the council under certain circumstances. They're at 5:30, you know, and you're a developer or you're from another town, you know, wanting to develop a property or whatever it might be, you know, getting to a 5:30 meeting is difficult, and I know from experience, and so I think you guys are doing the right thing with having it at 7:00. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Chairman, seeing as no one else, we're just pause.
I make a pause, 296, I'm going to go. I just wanted to, to raise a question. You know, I, I was here this evening for the Sabbath application. You know, I have some concerns about it, and I really, at this point, since the application, I think it's not been deemed completed at this point, and it's been pushed back. I'll just be back, I guess. Just congratulations on the...
We have concerns about it, too.
Okay. And it seems like you have some people here this evening. I mean, I know it's permitted use, I don't know if there's a problem with that. I know that the planning board sent a letter to council, asked us to review the townhouse portion of our ordinance, and the council basically said back that we were not making changes at the time, and those are the applications. Asked for 27 townhouses, where the lots were cut in half, for 8,000, 4,000. There are five-thirty, you know, and you're a developer or you're from another town, you know, wanting to develop a property or whatever it might be, you know, getting to a five-thirty meeting is, is difficult, and I know from experience, and so I think you guys are doing the right thing with having it at seven. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Chairman, seeing as no one else, open. Do you have a pause?
I may pause, so two ninety-six, something like that. I just wanted to, to raise a question. You know, I, I was here this evening for the Salmers application. You know, I have some concerns about it, and I really, at this point since the application, I think it's not been deemed completed at this point, and it's been pushed back. I'll just be back, I guess. Just congratulations on.
We have concerns about it too.
Okay. And it seems like you have some people here this evening. I mean, I know it's permitted use, I don't know if there's a problem with that. I know that the planning board sent a letter to council asking us to review the townhouse portion of our ordinance, and the council basically sent back that we were not making changes in the time, and those are the applications. Asked for twenty-seven townhouses where the lots were cut in half, before the main thousand, four thousand. And I just think that the planning board, you know, when you guys make a decision, it lasts forever. You know, if the council makes a decision, it can change. So, you know, what you guys do will evaporate for history in the decision. So I hope they'll be there and hopefully it'll be.
I read the notice in the paper, Mayor. I immediately got concerned because there's a word in there that no one.
Which one? Have you have a, have a little bit to?
My perp cake. You know what that means?
What's that?
My perp cake.
You know, I, I thought it was a misspell. I don't know what that means.
That was an actual word, it means to split.
Oh, to split, okay.
Okay? And I, I went by the rule of that, and that's, that's really perp on yourself. I said, yeah, what's this?
I mean, townhouses are permitted use. You know, I visited Kimberly Court when I was director of public work for one year, we tried to file Rose there, you know, townhouses are a good thing to have, but at the same time, I was always concerned, and I actually should express my concerns to some other members. It's always, we do decide to do it, we do take these concerns, you know, to like apartment, how we're going to file and things like that. But, you know, the big issue that I think is, is that we should maybe embrace development in the town because it is a positive thing, you know, new houses get built in our community that have value that is greater or at least equal to what we have now. One of the concerns were the smaller houses, obviously they would be forty foot lots. I know we allowed some infilling, which I think is unfair when you have forty foot lots throughout the whole block, but I think we ought to be cautious about it. And the only thing I was going to present tonight, it did get heard, a member of council when, when I was construction engineering, Mr. Salmers did submit an application, not an application, but formally, but a plan that showed this piece of property subdivided into fifty-three different lots. John, did you get a chance to look at that? Remember that original?
That was the original application. I submitted, we did an initial review, didn't complete.
Did the board review all that?
Mr. Composis is the third time.
Okay.
We're at this stage, a version of this application.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, if I may.
Yes.
I do expect the process. I think you have a hearing coming up on this application, so you probably shouldn't be.
First of all, fine.
I mean, you have.
I appreciate you saying, but the board should not.
They should.
Give it a kind of liberation, listen to you.
They can listen to me.
You have laws of caution, you still have to be here at the hearing.
I will be here, yes. You know, the only last thing I would say.
You would have to take the position that if there's any kind of illegal matter pertaining to this application, you would have to defer because you've already discussed it with the board. That's the position you're in.
What's that?
Well, I think the comments you made tonight, you want the board to really consider that as part of the application itself, you have to be here at the next.
I will be here, yes. But is he saying I can't, I make the comment now that I have to recuse myself of the future?
No, I don't think you have to recuse yourself, but I would caution you as to how far you go into some comments to deal with the marital application, because the applicant is not here.
Yes.
And the applicant might raise that as an issue when you review.
Okay. I'll just leave it with, you know, the last thing I would like to say is, I mean, I know the threshold for granting variance is that there should be, you know, a benefit to the community, no detriment to the community and a hardship for the applicant, and I just, you know, am once again concerned about the hardship aspect of, you know, the applicant has shown in his previous applications that he could subdivide the lots in such a way that he could meet our standards, and now he's coming in front of us asking to, for variance, to, you know, you said, split the lots, and I think that the board should sort of, I appreciate your time, congratulations. Thank you.
Good evening, burning worth by six, three show every drive. I'm here tonight, I received a letter from the state that my neighbor's fence is five foot tall, is not a building construction problem, it's a zoning problem. If you don't know, I have a five-foot fence on a corner lot that Mr. Beck has issued a permit for. There's been a ruling by the borough solicitor, there's been a ruling by the state zoning, it's a front yard, it's a corner lot, it's two front yards, it intersects with another street, and nothing's been done. I don't have much other choice but to take it to court. No action's been taken, Mr. Beck has been advised to do what he has to do. I received a note back in September from June that he wrote, let me go read the ordinance. I have not spoken to Mr. Beck since August because of my position on council. Mr. Kennedy has been adverse on everything that's been done, including communication with the state. State reviewed it and says it's a zoning problem. This is the zoning board. I don't, I don't know who he works for. He doesn't want to tell the guy that the fence has to come down and has to meet the zoning rule.
The board is going to take any kind of action, the board would have to have the solicitor get involved.
Uh, the solicitor, our solicitor has been involved from the borough. He's issued a ruling back on October thirty-first that it has to follow the zoning code, but no action's been done by the zoning officer to get removed. When I look out my front door and there's a five-foot fence between me and a corner, and you come out of Olson's work, you can't see to the right, there's a five-foot fence blocking your view.
I understand that you have a perfect right to be here, and, but I don't think that the planning, I don't think the planning board can do anything about it.
This is zoning law, sir.
This is zoning.
Who does the zoning officer work for?
Well, I think as the chair, we've all called the stout here, this is the first time, just understanding the complications that will have in the statute. The board has a board, does not really have jurisdiction once the zoning officer made his decision. Now, if the decision says the fence is illegal, the real, the board can't do anything about it, the order has already been given, the next step has to be taken by the zoning officer or by.
By the black, by the zoning officer, correct?
Pardon me?
Well, when you know, do your job, who's his boss? Who does the zoning officer work for? Who is his boss?
Apparently not, because he hasn't moved, hasn't moved any.
Actually, I've alluded because their flexences involved.
I understand that. There's no permit needed for fences to stay on, it's in borough of Runnymede, under six foot. That was moved on.
Wait a minute. That is a state regulation.
Mm-hmm.
The borough should have an ordinance when it does.
That's correct, but it's not part of the U C C, not our, our inspection.
Therefore, the U C C can't tell him that he has to tell them to take it down, because in their eyes, it shouldn't be there. They don't, they don't take that application from under six feet. Has to be six feet or over.
And the ordinance for the corner lot say it has to be see-through, not stockade.
You're missing the point. In order for the U C C, the state, to tell him, to tell you, that guy to take it down.
Now, they didn't tell, the state didn't tell you to take it down.
They can't because.
State didn't say that. The state said refer it to the municipal.
That's the, that's the.
That's the.
The state only regulates above six feet and eight feet in order for it to be on a construction permit, okay? They can't tell him to tell him to take it down because it shouldn't have been done like that.
No, the letter said to refer back with the borough solicitor that issued on October thirty-first.
Okay. They would have to have an ordinance on the books stating that you need a permit. It shouldn't be on U C C forms, it should be on a different form.
So it's the defense that made the zoning.
I know, but it's not a state thing, you keep saying the state.
No, you, the state said that it's not their problem.
Restriction, correct, but it's not.
Right. But I mean, I went, the state, they said it's not under building, it's under zoning.
It's under.
Who does the zoning officer work for?
Mayor and council, for the vice, for the upturn, he's avoided by Mayor and council.
There has to be a resolution on the floor from the town.
The defense did?
And the, and the regulations.
I don't care if it's a permit or not, I just want to know, how does the defense do? If it's a zoning, he didn't come here, I checked with the fence, was there something that's with the zoning board one day, and he says to me, no, I said, because I didn't get any notice. How was, you know?
I notice our, if anybody comes in front of the board, that the fence is part of an application, it's, it's bended to the point where it can't be over five feet, that they want six foot, they gotta get there.
It's not that, it can't be stockade, it can't be over four foot, it's on a corner lot. So there's two front yards. The argument is that, I understand Mr. Beck, I don't believe it's a front yard, he can set what the front yard is, or what is a front yard, and there's any ordinance doesn't allow it. It allows them to type where a front yard starts, but you still have to follow the fence ordinance that says it has to be see-through.
But it, it doesn't work for you, it's either, so I think that.
I thought we had clarified the front yard in one of our meetings. Very interesting.
The corner lot is, has two front yards.
Yes. I believe that's.
That's only one of our, it's one of ours, aren't you, Mr.? As far as the new business, and that's an R three. All corner lots have two front yards. If I'm speaking the truth, and I'm speaking for members, but I think when we did the sub, the rezones, the power, I mean, we've got the best of plan, and the R three area that we, we put in there, at the suggested of the panel, that all corner lot should have two front yards.
Was that just an R three there?
I think it is, yes. I mean, we can look it up.
I think that's fine, I apparently don't get nowhere.
People come in.
No, I understand that, but I have not spoken to Mr. Beck, because he's, as you said, I was one of his employers.
Now, I don't feel like it changed it across the counter when the people come in and there's going to be a case, as far as the, what the standards are.
Well, my, my neighbor said Mr. Beck has shown where he wanted the fence. He went down with block plan, he thought, drew it to where he wanted to put, what that fence is put on. But I have all my phone records, I did speak to him, and the answers that I got back, but I mean, as far as I understand, they haven't changed the front yard, it's the front yard, and it's still, the Galscrust Street has the legal fence. So now you have a neighborhood district getting started, because this has been since August, what, twenty-fourth, Mayor, the Friday before the storm, because she had seen the neighbor out on the hurricane. Nothing, no communication to my community except tell me to go read the statute.
Mr. Beck, is that you?
I was in a note from Jim, Jim Ford, my member of us. I have that.
And the statute states it has to be.
Is there any of that? I'm just saying, I didn't know he worked for it. Okay? Because I know, I don't, I'm not interfering, Mr. White, if I don't alter that because we're going to come down. Okay? But we've talked in, and, you know, Mr. Kennedy did make a thinking, and it's not my department, and I don't set one of his for. So if it doesn't work for you, it's a, I'll stick. Go from there. Thank you. Congratulations. I like, I love it, it's in the whole seat.
Thank you.
Thank you. I need to get. The only question I, I guess I had, this is my first time I've been on the plate, is the zoning officer required to come to your meeting?
I think it was on the agenda.
It is on the agenda.
I, I went by, I don't think so.
Yeah, I, I just, you know.
It's not a number, no.
It's not, but I mean, it's at the pleasure of the board to ask the zoning officers to come to your meeting.
Right, if they want, if there's an issue that they think he should be here, make sure to ask them.
So it's a pleasure of the board to ask the zoning officer, I think the board should consider it, the zoning officer, I think holds a very important position, and if he goes on the meetings, I think it would be helpful, because then we could clarify. I do know the ordinance, and I am a member of council, the ordinance does state that a, you can have a five-foot fence, and if you read down, it says if you, there's A and it was B, and say, and of course it says that it's a, a side, a corner property, a corner property, this team has two front yards, and it should be set back. And we have a letter from our solicitor that's stating this. However, where this, the discrepancy is coming out, this house is empty zone, obviously council has not taken action. I think Mr. Moore is trying to see, is there any complaining if we can take some action? I guess Mr. White is, would be the one who would take the action, because he is the director of that department. So firstly, you know, we have a solicitor's report, we have the zoning ordinance, we have the letter from the state, I think maybe it's time that we should try to resolve this issue, so, thank you.
Well, Nick, just to tell you, when you were on council last time, and me and Keith and Chris brought up all this stuff, the ordinances we needed changed and everything.
Yes.
Yes. We mostly got up.
Well, he recalled you, when I came on council, we were in the middle of codifying all the ordinances.
We were, yes.
So we had to codify the ordinances first, because see, we had ordinances that had not even been put in the book.
We never got around to making all the changes that we needed to make.
Absolutely.
And this is where the issue is.
I, I don't deny that council takes responsibility.
On either side, I'm saying it just never was done, and this is what we need to do.
Okay, so we should resolve this issue and then resolve the ordinance.
Stop the fighting, we can get the job done.
Mrs. Alkins, I am no longer the director of construction engineering.
It doesn't matter, you're on council.
I haven't been there for two years, has it been?
That's a fact, you're on council, and you know what we tried to do.
You have a mayor sitting on the planning board, you have a council member sitting on the planning board.
He wasn't here.
They can take action now.
That's correct, we all need to work together.
Okay, so I'm asking right now to, to this board, to send a recommendation to mayor and council, which the planning board has the right to do, to ask for ordinances to be changed. So let's look at these ordinances. We have several ordinances that deal with storage facilities, we have ordinances that deal with cars.
And you'll be there at the end of the year.
And I am on council, and I think we should clarify on this, but I think action needs to be taken, maybe the planning boards can send a letter to, to council, say that the zoning officer has misinterpreted this application, and should, should move forward with that.
I don't know if that's misinterpreted, but we need to move forward and get this stuff correctly.
Okay. Ordinance is, you can recommend to the council, you guys set up a master plan, and it said in some of the, some of the master plan, it said for council to review different aspects. The zoning officer can send the ordinances up to us, planning board can send the ordinances up to us. Send ordinances to council for us to review them, and if we adopt them, it will be the law of our municipality. So I, I ask you again.
You have to have a solicitor review them, okay? So you can get Mr. Kennedy to get a few together, decide what you want to put in there, and draw it up. We don't write the ordinances.
The master plan comes from the, the.
I'm not talking.
The planning board, but that's where this ordinance is originated, with the idea, Mr. Conover.
I'm not talking about the master plan.
I think, Conover was saying the same thing. Anytime there is a suggestive change in the land use ordinance, that change can originate at council or can originate here. Regardless of where it originates, it has to come here with a recommendation to governing body before the governing body can do a second reading on the ordinance adoption. So if there is a requested land use change that involved your land use ordinance, it comes here for review. This board has its public hearing in a sense, at an open meeting, makes a recommendation for or against it to the governing body.
So, but it can originate from, right?
It can originate or it can be requested.
And then anything that we do comes back to you guys, that's correct. So once again, anyway, this is your opportunity to.
Somebody asked me, just said somebody, are you recommending us to do that?
No, no, you're the. No, no, you're the one.
No, no, he didn't say that, he said somebody out there has to recommend.
Well, it can come from-
It can come, he, he's looking at me in council, as council representative. Not as, not as the rest of you.
Well, I mean, you're, I mean, isn't you, if you're representing, if we do this?
What's that?
That's why, I understood, some-
Do you have a recommendation?
Oh, as a member of council, I have recommendations?
But that's why I'm asking.
I don't want to speak for the entire council, but I would say that as a member of council, I think that zoning officer, as well as the zoning board, construction secretary has, and the, and the code enforcement official, has on many occasions, uh, come to council and asked us to make some changes towards our ordinance. It has fallen on deaf ears, and I, I would not say that I necessarily complete part of that, but I, I, I don't want to make any excuses. But as a member of council, we have not sent, I don't think, anything to this planning board in the three years that I've been on council, asking the planning board to review an ordinance. But, once again, we are not, we are not seeing the applications come here. You guys are seeing the applications, you're seeing what people are coming here asking for. And if you think that something should be changed, it should be changed. You just said fences not really come to this, this board. You know, the issue at hand right now was the fact that we can either clarify this fence ordinance, which has become more evident with Mr. Moore's application. The simple fact is though, is that this, 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 this problem with Mr. Moore, the, read the ordinance. The ordinance very clearly states that the fence was not allowed. The solicitor says that the ordinance is not allowed. For some reason, we're having a, a lack of understanding of what the next step is. And I think that's what Mr. Moore was trying to say, who's in charge? When a zoning officer consistently say, "I've made this decision," is he circumventing all of you, all of us, to make his own, his own decision? But, June, you will definitely get some stuff from me, at least from suggestions, at least, but I think it should originate from the planning board. You guys are seeing the land use issue.
Nick, my response to your was going to be twofold. First of all, I, I concur with your comments regarding, uh, Mr. Moore's, uh, problem here. Uh, I think if Mr. Meckler is under the direct supervision of Mr. White, then I think, uh, Mr. White should possibly take it upon himself to meet with Mr. Meckler and visit the property and see if this in fact is the case, if we do have a violation of the ordinance. And then, uh, if, if Mr. White deems it a problem, then I think Mr. Meckler needs to do what his security instructions to do. And this is my opinion. Uh, Mr. White, does he answer to you?
Yes.
Okay, if he's willing to do that, to try and help, uh, take care of our records on Mr. Moore's, please, sir?
Yeah, maybe I'll, I'll have the letter from the board, from the council.
No, I, I agree with you. Plus, what we're saying to you right now, Mr. Moore, is-
I understand, I, I think it's more than rather you-
Well, what I'm saying to you now is Mr. Moore has just, has just said on public record that he's going to, uh, Mr. Meckler, and look at this property, and look at the ordinance, and make it right. Okay, so we have it on public record right now. My second comment, Nick, is that, um, I've been on the board about thirteen years, and, um, probably a lot of things that get done that aren't seen. Um, we do make recommendations, and we do make changes along the way. I think probably a few of them, uh, recently, uh, we had a problem with, we did not want to allow freestanding A-frame signs and flags, okay? The newest Gichere, I believe, was crazy with the flags, you know? So we, we do, it is, it is a work in progress. Um, we're also having dialogue right now on solar panels, okay? Because we all knew, we all know that renewable energy is a new up and coming thing, okay? So we're having dialogue right now about what we want to do about solar panels and renewable energy, because as you all well know, um, you know, there's a gazillion salesmen out there knocking on your door who only give you free electricity if you want to put a solar panel in your front yard. Well, I want a solar panel in my neighbor's front yard, I can look at it. So, we, we are very proactively working on these things. Every time we, every time we have an application, if something comes up that we say, geez, if we had something to regulate this, we wouldn't be having this conversation. I mean, I'm, I'm one of the people that, you know, I want to have an ordinance in place so I don't have to go to, tell somebody and say, well, you know, different path. If there's ordinance in place, then we can, um, either, you know, grant them a variance to the ordinance, or we can stand by the ordinance and say, no, the ordinance has its merits. This is the ordinance, that's what we're going to stand by. If there's no ordinance in place, you got nothing to stand on, yes. Okay, so, we have ordinances, we have the opportunity to develop ordinances. The same thing with the cell towers, I'm sure you're aware of that, we, we put plans in for the, the cell towers. So, I personally would welcome, if you have any ordinances you think need to be looked at, I would certainly welcome those ordinances, and, um, we can certainly, uh, sit down and have a public portion of the meeting and talk about them. That's what we're here for, we're here to help.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, thank you. Speaking of the chair, I would think I would defer to have Mr. Hottabier say that, uh, references to the next incoming solicitor that ended public portion of the meeting, there was an agenda, I do reference it, high defenses, right? And sort of, it's under record, and it doesn't just die on the line.
Thank you, thank you.
Anyone else?
Judge Jeff Morris, I'm standing close to city. I forgot to ask more questions, like, when I was originally on field, if I had asked this, uh, I apologize. Uh, Mr. Chairman, you had said, um, I guess at the beginning in the, in the, about, uh, is the applicant supposed to be heard tonight? That's originally, because if your solicitor having a conflict, the mayor and council would possibly go and hear it. But their solicitor having a conflict, could I inquire as to what conflict Mr. Kennedy had?
Basically, he can't sit, as the borough solicitor to sit for the planning board, prosecutor cannot sit for the planning board, that's why they have conflicts.
Okay, that would, yeah. Finally, uh, now, Victor, Councilman White, is he a voting member here? Um, if he's not a member of the planning board, and I don't see his name here, but I ask why he's sitting up there, and does he normally sit up there?
I'm filling in for Tony Dieter, as a member of council. I'm sitting in Tennessee for tonight, as a member of council.
You're the, I guess, the councilmatic member?
No, I'm filling in for Tony Dieter tonight, so I'm filling in for-
Did you vote tonight?
Yes, I did.
Okay, that appointment, I guess, you know, Mr. Beatrice is duly appointed and sworn in, uh, to that, to be the representative for the council. I would say, would the council have to approve changing it? Because the mayor has no say, the mayor sends a letter, it doesn't matter, the mayor has no say over control of that seat. She has one seat, or she can appoint, but doesn't need it, council has one seat.
No, that's not true.
Well, have, you know, really with this practice in the past, Mr. Carter?
I'm sorry.
Have you, have any exposure to this practice?
The, uh, one council member and one mayor.
Right.
Mayor's appointment just comes as the mayor, then council, makes the, uh, council designated, appoint a general alternate steward. You know, how the practice has been here, so I want to reserve a comment. But that's what the statute says, you have council, or that member that's appointed.
My opinion is that the mayor signed the letter and-
Mr. Beatrice is on vacation, and I signed the letter in the fact that another council member would be taken from this.
Mayor, you-
It is alternate.
And he's here last month, so he should be in wait on the note on it, because he knows what the answer is.
So I signed for an alternate.
Mayor, you have no authority to do that, that is the councilmatic seat, council seat. You have no authority over the council there.
I, it, I don't know if that's, I, I would reserve, I really don't want to make a comment on that. I really haven't really made up the, the form of government for mayor.
Uh, form of government.
It's a, uh, I have, I have reserved a comment on that, as to whether or not the mayor has the right to sit in at a meeting because the council designated individual is absent.
Can I, is there some way I can?
It should be noted, at this point though, that any vote, if, if it was not approved that Mr. White gave us this evening, we will not invalidate any of this, this, this-
I, I understand that. My concern is that I, I watched the reorganization meeting. Uh, I believe Mr. Beatrice was appointed as the council member to the planning and zoning board. If he's not here, then, you know, it's just like, um, yourself being absent before meeting, you're absent.
We have a live share of that.
Right, you know? But, you know, say, you know, it's, the council, then that's good, council, council appoints one member of council to that seat. The council does jump their ass?
Well, I, I'd have to defer to the gentleman that has the chief's seat.
You could look into the statutes.
What I'd say to you is, is I can communicate with the borough solicitor on the set of circumstances, and advise the mayor and the chair, uh, if you're at the next meeting, uh, they can come.
I have a question. If, if, if he is correct, then what would happen if Mr. White's vote was just strictly in the record, or?
You have a meeting in December?
Yes.
The, uh, when a member of the board is, uh, has set the alternate, designated alternate case-
I'm, I'm saying, my question is, if he's, if Mr. Spence is correct, what happened if Mr. White's vote was just strictly in the record?
And, uh, he was requested to sit in for the regularly appointed council member, and the person that would sit in for the member of council would be the alternate, the designated alternate.
Got you. So, at this point, at this point, what, what David said is, um, at this point, if you are, oh, correct.
And the alternate will take the seat.
So he's an alternate member of this board?
No. The gentleman-
The gentleman said, you know, right now, I'm, I'm confused. I don't, I don't recall in statute, or any other planning was ever being, I don't think- Well, it's actually a group, I think, called Land Use Law, they just chapter-
Or not, well, no, what I mean was-
The old one sure voted.
That's correct.
Okay, that's my, that's my other question.
In terms of, I never heard of, and I don't think it's in statute, where there is a position of alternate member of, of council. The council gets one equipped, and I never heard of, council gets an alternate member of council, that council isn't there.
I don't, I don't think he said that, Mr. Smith, I think what he's trying to-
Right, how is Mr. White here then?
Well, I'm trying to explain to you what I think, uh, David was saying. He's saying that if, in fact, this gentleman, Mr. White, is not going to vote, he was not going to be here, Mr. Beatrice was not going to be here, then, at that point in time, the alternate, who would normally not vote, would vote, that is what he's trying to explain.
You're alternate number one?
Correct.
Of the planning and zoning?
You got it.
Okay, I thought you were talking about that.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Okay, uh, I, I hopefully get a response, uh, if you want, I can send the clerk an email, if you want to respond to me via email. Uh, probably the best way. And, uh, I guess whoever communicates with the borough solicitor, uh, Mr. Kennedy, I would like to ask the question for the record. Does the mayor have the authority to, uh, appoint council appointees? Thank you.
Could I come up? Sorry to come up here after all this. Uh, Dave Walker, 25, we'll throw him that. A question, I don't even know if it could be even answered here, maybe John would be familiar with it. My old house, it's 216 Chestnut, a friend of mine, a lawyer, George Batu House, he's at birth tonight, he's a nurse, he wears lights. Uh, so he can't make the meeting. He had a question for me today. The street, at Chestnut Street, on the tax map, it shows it a thirty foot wide street. However, only twenty foot of it is paved, so there's a strip of grass that kind of runs up Chestnut. Well, he's Greek, and he has a large family that come over on the weekend. And he had one of his relatives parked in front of his house on that patch of grass, which is a paper street, but it's not paved. And they got a ticket issued. So I guess he asked me if I knew if it was illegal to park in the street. So I, I kind of, I don't, I don't, I don't know if I'm speaking out of turn, but I, I mean, I don't-
I, I would all due respect, I would advise the board, if he has a pending ticket for the municipal court, that that's probably not something that you want to respond to. But his issue before the municipal court deals with what is the legitimate right of way, and whether or not that grass area is in the right of way, part of the street just got paved. But I think there are, they are defense issues for the municipal court, and the board should not make any comments on that.
Okay.
With all due respect.
No, I, I worked for sure, I didn't, I didn't want to upset him.
Right.
All right, thank you.
Thanks, Dave.
Anyone else?
Yes, everybody.
Questions in order to close the call, proportion?
It shows it to the next one.
Motion made, set closing call, the portion of the meeting, all of the papers, Mr. Park was set high.
Aye.
Public portion of the meeting, you have a second time, please. And, and, motion in order, now, for the term.
Thank you, motion to adjourn, Mr. Chair.
I'll second the motion, all of the papers, aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much, appreciate your attendance, thank you very much, for the conference and the gathering.
You're welcome.